So if anyone is interested in public input, if you wish to address the Select Board during public comments, you may do so in person or via Zoom by raising your hands. Please identify yourselves by name and street, and we may or may not deliberate on any topics that's brought up. Anybody there? No one seems to have anything to say. Do you guys have any public comment? Nice to see you both.
No, I'll watch.
No, I'll watch. All right, let's move on to reports and announcements. Steve?
All right. So on Tuesday, August 29th, we're having a Narcan training at the library. This is coordinated by our new shared social worker. It's called overdose prevention and response training. So it's how to recognize an overdose, how to respond to an overdose, and the steps we can take to prevent them. So this, you can RSVP to Jesse Palm, Regional Social Worker, at jpalm@hamiltonma.gov. We also have this flyer is on social media and on the website. And if any folks at home listening to this, you can just contact the Select Board's office. If you can't find the information, I'll be to forward it along.
So that's an afternoon meeting or morning meeting?
Yeah, 10:30 to 11:30 a.m.
On Tuesday.
The Planning Board would like to invite the Select Board, and I can send this to coordinate schedules through email tomorrow, but they would like to invite the Select Board to their meeting on Thursday, September 7th, at 6:00 or 6:30 to have the first information session regarding the MBTA zoning.
We'll do that by email.
So you know, is there any questions you want me to bring back to them? And we've received a couple pickleball noise complaints down at Pingree Park. Evidently, folks are using the tennis courts to play pickleball. They're also, the tennis courts are being used by the Recreation Department for pickleball lessons. And these are for resident, and the complaint is coming for the residents' use of these courts for pickleball. So the Recreation Director is looking into the frequency of use of pickleball and trying to get an idea on how much louder it is than tennis. And then, you know, may come back to the Select Board to make it, you know, a determination one way or the other whether pickleball is allowed there or not.
So you said two different things, though. Or I heard two different things. Recreation lined the courts and were giving lessons. We knew that before. So now there's residents are complaining that they can't use the courts for pickleball?
No, they're complaining that, they're not complaining for the training because of the times the training are at.
The times.
But the, sometimes folks are playing pickleball late into the evening. Not nighttime, but it sounds like maybe up till six or seven.
Because there's no lights there, right?
Yeah, not until the night, but in the later afternoon.
Okay.
So just so you're aware of that.
They could lock the courts.
What's that?
They could lock the courts.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, I think the idea was that it's a public park, and it would be open to people who wanted to play tennis during daylight hours. So is...
I'm not even sure there are tennis courts up, tennis nets up. You can't play tennis on those courts, which is why no one's using them for tennis.
Okay. So a determination had to be made whether, one way or the other, whether an allowable use at Pingree Park for the courts is pickleball or tennis or anything else.
So Sean's going to work on that and get back to us?
Yeah, just, he's trying to identify how frequently it's happening. If it was just a couple times one week, or if it's a reoccurring, is he gonna get back to me? So the Board of Assessors shared agreement. It's an annual agreement, so the Select Board has to elect every year to extend it. So what we're doing right now is I have requested from all the, all three Board of Assessor members to fill out a performance review of our shared assessor. As part of the agreement, we participate in his annual performance review with Hamilton, where they essentially oversee the day-to-day operations of that department, being an elected board. I still send feedback from them. Once I receive it all, I will go back to Joe and Hamilton, and we'll collaborate on a performance review and then make a recommendation of whether it's working out, we want to extend it or not.
So that's just on the shared assessor, the principal assessor?
Correct.
Right? And there's an option not to continue?
It's in, yeah, every year. You have to elect to continue it. And then the Wenham Country Club contacted me last week. They're having issues with drainage. They're saying that, I guess, there's some beaver dams that are blocking the river and backing up onto the golf course. Additionally, the cemetery had a drain that was clogged. And also, I put them in touch with the Salem Beverly Water Board, but I coordinated with Rich. He's gonna go down there if he hasn't already to clean out the drain. And Chief Kavanaugh is going over there to walk the grounds with them and give them some feedback on the beaver. And from what Chief Kavanaugh told me, that we don't, and neither, none of the neighboring communities do monitor or actively trap beaver. Just it doesn't, it seems like it's a kind of a losing battle trying to do, manage their behavior and trap them and dispatch them.
So he's going, Chief Kavanaugh is doing that because his appointment of the indigenous animal control?
Animal control.
Yeah. Just to make sure that's clear.
So we've worked with, worked with the Health Department. They were concerned they didn't have any dedicated space in Town Hall, and their stuff was, you know, located in a few different areas of the building. So we're working to clean out a cage down the basement for all their stuff that needs to be locked up. We've also had purchased a PC and had micro support set it up. So they have a dedicated PC and desk space in the permitting office, along with a couple empty file cabinets, so that, you know, now they're, you know, can come in and have a spot in Town Hall to do whatever they need to do. And other than that, just, you know, we've been busy, obviously, with the turnover and finance and the Police Department, and populating, organizing the budget templates in anticipation of those going out next week, depending on how the memo review goes. And that's all I have for it, though.
Wow, that was a lot of stuff. That's all really good stuff. You've been very busy. So no other announcements either, then, right? We're good?
That's for me, sorry.
Okay. So on to me. I got a letter. Thanks for my mailman brought it down. The Hamilton Council on Aging invites us to a lunch and talk with the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, Secretary Chen. This is Thursday, September 21st, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. till 12:30. 299 Bay Road must be the senior center of the COA in Hamilton. And if anyone's interested, they can RSVP to Teresa or Tim. I can pass that around. So that's kind of cool. Do you want to see that? I got notification from our amazing school committee at Essex Tech, our school committee member, Mr. Bucow. They sent us a memo that they have finalized their budget, and I believe it was less than what they anticipated. So it's for me to give to the treasurer. I would read the numbers, but I'm not really sure I understand what it all says. It's just...
It's a year-over-year.
We can just share it with the treasurer?
Yeah, so it looks like a $20,000 increase. Yeah, I'll share it with...
I think it only said we had 11 students last year. 2022 is the easy data.
That's saving from 171 to 190 this year.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I know we have something else about the tech. And then I got another, we got another information from the Federal Emergency Management Agency about the flood maps. This one came certified mail. We had already had one, but Steve is working on finishing that with the flood maps. And the other thing I found out about was a different type of emergency contact system called RAVE that goes out through the emergency, what do we call the regional?
Regional 911.
The regional 911 center. That might be an idea for us to look into as opposed to code red. So I just asked Steve to look into that. That's all I think I have. Anybody else? Who's the chair, vice chair? Anything to say?
Yes. Amazingly enough, this weekend, the Hamilton Wenham ITL baseball team won the championship for the second time in a row. And they hadn't won in 50 years prior to last year.
Really?
Wow.
I just think I read that Harrison is on that. Are there other, what other, oh, it's Hamilton Wenham. Any other Wenham kids on that?
Frain, I mean, all these guys. I mean, Frain, I think, has already been drafted by a pro team, especially at Eastert.
Wow.
Yeah, they got some good players.
That's great.
And evidently, it was extra innings, and my friend, who knows a lot about baseball, said it was probably one of the best baseball games he's ever seen in his life.
Cool. Were you there?
No.
Oh, but you knew.
Yeah, I wish I'd gone.
Gary, do you have anything to report?
Yes, congratulations to Jim Reynolds and the COA staff for a great ice cream social last week. Special thanks to Senator Tarr and Representative Parisio that did the ice cream scooping, and Joe Scuderi, who provided the entertainment with his singing. We had a, I think there was probably at least 60 people turned up for that.
Wow.
So it's good showing. And also, we should say thank you to the Food Project, who laid out two full tables of vegetables from the Lot Row Farm free of charge to the seniors afterwards.
That's great. Thank you. Deidre, do you have anything?
Well, since we're doing congratulations, I'll say congratulations to the Hamilton Wenham Community House for putting on another fabulous production with the youth cast of Be More Chill. It was a wonderful show. Some fantastic Wenham teens performed in it, and great time, as always. They do a fabulous job.
They do. They do. It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
And do you have anything?
More just a question relating to the Iron Rail Study Commission meeting that we had last week, which I thought was, you know, very productive. There were some unfortunate technical interruptions from a Zoom bomber, et cetera, which maybe is a subject of some other, you know, agenda item, like how to, if there's preventative software or something along those lines. But I just wanted to ask whether Dodson and Flinker, who is the consultant for that, whether they, as far as you know, seem willing to schedule another kind of public session, and if so, like when that might be?
Yeah. Can I address that? So we've been in correspondence with Dodson and Flinker, and they are definitely excited to work with the town the upcoming months. Steve and I are actually going to be meeting with them via Zoom tomorrow with Peter, and Eli is one of the planners there. And there's some ideas floating around, potentially having a second meeting be all in person at a, at a larger space. We're still in, you know, looking over all the options, and a potential third meeting as well. So we are going to, excited. They're still working on finishing the project by the end of the year, if possible, perhaps even a little sooner than that. But they're definitely going to start the interview process, too, with all the stakeholders, which includes the tenants on the property, the various organizations. Like Hamilton Wenham use soccer, for instance. So they're gonna start to get that ball rolling as well. But Steve and I will be working on that in the upcoming months, and we're very excited. And they had a great time here. The walkthrough one, I wasn't here for that, unfortunately, but the walkthrough went very well, from what I'm told. So they had a, they were, felt very welcome here with the town, so.
Right. That's great.
And they did a great job, too, so I already thanked them, sent them an email, and, you know, for making the drive up here, so.
Thanks, Joe. I just thought of one other update. As the Board knows, one of our priorities for the upcoming year is to try to develop a new website or an upgraded website. And so I've had some discussions with Michelle and Steve, and our plan is to set a date in September, where we'll have a kind of a kickoff brainstorming meeting here in Town Hall during business hours, to which we'll invite kind of key stakeholders in the building. So that would include Kirsten, you, you'll be getting an invitation, Kate, Margaret, and others within Town Hall, who, you know, will have some, you know, great ideas and input on, on how we can make the website better. Michelle's already done a little bit of research on a couple of other recently updated municipal websites that we can look at. And we just thought that that would be the best way to sort of kick this process off, would be to get people's input. What I'll try to do in consultation with Steve, Joe, and Michelle, is prior to that meeting, we'll put out a little mini agenda, or just some, like, you know, points for people, for people to think about, so that they can bring, you know, some feedback to that meeting to get things started.
Okay. And I would just add that Joe and I are hopefully going to meet next Wednesday or Thursday to talk about the communications plan.
Great.
Everybody's so busy. That's great. All right. So we also got correspondence from the Essex Tech again about their borrowing that I'll let Steve explain.
Yeah, so a couple things here. First, the Essex Tech, the school committee voted to give, to authorize the borrowing for their veterinary facilities. This happened back in May of '23. We, you know, we never received notification that I'm aware of, which was supposed to be sent out to us within seven days. So we received, we then received a request for clerk certification of our receipt. This is all communities in the district, the 17 communities received an electronic copy of the clerk, of the clerk's receipt of the letter, which, you know, I responded saying is the first time that I've seen it. And so, you know, that, that's one piece in that, you know, KP Law said that in the event that we need to hold a special town meeting, where it's our right to hold a special town meeting, then we'll, you know, we're kind of waiting and seeing what the other communities have done. So they went, they tried to go forward with the borrowing. However, Bond Council went back to them and said, this is all over summer, and said that, you know, you can't go forward with the, with the borrowing until you show us, you know, the minutes of each held special election. So that's the second correspondence, so to go out, which we got timely. However, from what I've taught, from all the community that I've talked to, which is more than half in that list, nobody has held a special town meeting. So it's unlikely that Wenham holding a special town meeting would affect their authorization to borrow, because they need at least two-thirds of the communities to vote, essentially hold a special town meeting, and that special town meeting vote to be, not, not allow the authorization to borrow. So in the event that, you know, there's, there's two-thirds that didn't hold special town meetings, then it wouldn't matter if we held one or not, just so you're aware of that that's going on. We're waiting to see, once the final tally comes in from the second correspondence, Lauren is involved, and we're just waiting to see. She represents most of the communities, and she says, from what she's aware of, nobody's held a special town meeting. But we're just waiting to get 100% confirmation if anyone did hold a special town meeting, and what the impact would be if Wenham was to hold a special town meeting, whether it be yes or no, and then the Board can make a determination whether they want to hold one or not.
The letter just says that the town of Wenham took no action either to approve or disprove. And we did take no action to approve or disprove.
Yeah, but we're not responding, because we're, we're not sending back any certifications, because we're essentially holding on to our right to act, so the, because we didn't get it timely. Or our argument is that we didn't get it timely in the first place. So that if we need our 60 days to hold a special town meeting, then they've got to wait for us.
Right. How many communities? Twenty-three communities?
I think it's 17, right?
17, I don't know where it came from.
Yeah, 17.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Here we are. Presentation about the town of Wenham's historic artifacts by Bob Hicks and Diana Lang. Welcome. So excited to have you.
I guess you probably know this is one of those tax work-off projects. And when this thing came along about essentially inventory and cataloging a collection of things that are in the Town Hall, it sounded pretty interesting. And so Diane and I got together, and the first thing we did was a tour to see what was there. And it kind of resembled Grandma and Grand's old attic with a lifetime collection of things that may have, may not have meant something to somebody. Their whole range is from almost, I don't understand why it's even there, to some really significant stuff. So looking at it all over, we decided that we would put the format of it into a PDF, because that would become available widely as if there was any inquiries. And also, it lends itself to modifications from time to time, additions and subtractions. So having decided to do that, we divvied up half a dozen of the different items that we were, appealed to us first, to, for a little practice, to see what we would come up with. And we put that together. This all started in April. And we put that together, and I put together a preliminary PDF with about a dozen items in it. And I ran it past Gary to make sure, I said, is this, does this look okay to you guys? And he said, fine. So I thought, okay, we can go ahead. And so we have gone ahead since then. I took the summer off, so to speak. Not school vacation, but stuff at home took precedence. But as of now, we've extended the existing PDF. I now have, we, the reason I say ours, I do the mechanics. We actually work together, but I'm the guy that formats the stuff in the computer. We have 20 different items now in the thing, and they're random items. We're looking in the future, a final reorg of the whole thing into maybe categories. We don't know yet. But right now, we're just pushing the stuff through. And 32 pages and 20 items. And what we've tried to do with each item is simply have a picture of it if possible. Some picture taken in Town Hall is not too easy to do with the light. A description, a location in Town Hall, acquisition, if known, the status, namely the condition of it, and the significance. Why is it there? And we try to answer those questions in each one, and write up a short story about it. And the significance generally involves a little look at some history, and not necessarily about the item, but about what the item represents. So that's where we're at right now. We've got about another dozen in the works. So, and altogether, the total number, I estimated 70 in the beginning, and that's a little high the mark. There's between 50 and 60. The reason I say that, there's still some stuff tucked in some cabinets that we haven't really pulled out yet, but we know it's there. And we're still working on the stuff you can see all around you. So, so anyway, the, my overwhelming impact to me personally of all this is, I don't have exactly yet a favorite item, but I am amazed at the incredible eclectic mix of stuff out there. Unbelievable, from, as I said, from, there's, there's what I call boilerplate by the USS Constitution hanging on the wall, or maybe George Washington. But then there's stuff out there that I don't know why it's there, and when you take it off the wall, there's nothing on the back. So, and we don't have, with the timeframe, $100 is two and a half weeks, even if it's spread out over the year, to dig too deep into the history. But we try to dig enough to find out what's going on. We thought that the item would be there, and here it is and what it is, and the significance, a little story about it, so people who bothered to read it would understand why it was there. So what I did pick out to close my brief talk was a item over in the town clerk's office, and it was hanging, it was on the wall, up around the corner, on a little corner shelf, and hardly in view. And of course, we were prowling around in these places, and the, and the people have been great letting us in and poke around. And anyhow, it turned out to be a announcement on very fine paper. You won't be able to see details, but it's, it's kind of nice, and that's about how big it is. And it is this. "A social ball at Town Hall Wenham on Friday evening, such and such, March 19th, 1858." Well, that's, I think, four years after the Town Hall was built. So they find, they had a thing. And the interesting stuff was, like, tickets, a buck and a quarter, including refreshments for ladies. And a buck and a quarter today, as I, I think that Kirsten just looked up the numbers for us over there, and it's like 35 or 40 bucks.
Forty-six dollars.
Forty-six? Oh, I'm glad you're here to bank me up. Thanks. I forget stuff. And anyway, so what we did with it, what I did with it, I happened to do this one. The reason I picked it out was, this is a sort of an unusual concept of what to do with Town Hall, have an entertainment, you know, public entertainment. So anyway, looking, I, this is very brief, and I'll just read it to you. I said the description was a framed, original small invitational flyer. Location, small corner shelf in town clerk's office. Acquisition unknown. I've now been informed, and so I'm going to be able to change it to who it was. It was a family in town that, after 75 years, gave it to the town. Status somewhat blotched, but readable. And the significance, the earliest known use of Town Hall for social purposes. So here's what I, here's what I did. This original 1858 notice shows that the Town Hall was used for social functions. Jack Hoaks, Treasures of Wenham History essay on Town Hall, tells us the following. Now, I lean on Jack's stuff a lot, because he did a lot deeper research than I'll ever get turned on to. And even though I know there's some disputes about what he has to say, it's probably an overall not bad information. On May 26, 1887, town officials hosted a reception at the Town Hall to mark the start of streetcar service in Wenham. The event was held in the hall on the second floor. Seeing a possibility for more social events at the Town Hall, in March 1888, the town voted to build a temporary structure for a stage on the second floor. Because the Town Hall was a hall. Upstairs was a big empty hall. On March 3rd, 1920, the town purchased a piano for the Town Hall. Two years later, on March 3rd, the townspeople voted to officially make Town Hall free for the use of various town organizations and functions, including entertainment and dancing. The late 30s and early 40s saw the Town Hall used for Saturday night dances. The second floor was open for dancers attended by young people from Wenham and surrounding towns. The building shook with a whole lot of jitterbugging, to the extent some people became concerned about the building's structural integrity. The dancers were halted. Okay. And with that, I will turn it over to Diana, because she has something, a few words for you. But that's where we're going.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mine is quite short, but my favorite so far is because you guys are sitting on it, or with it, that table. And we were pointed out at the last, there's a drawer at the end, and it had in it... And we were pointed out at the last, there's a drawer at the end, and it had in it that the table cost $32 in 1885. But we did find in the town books, it was written up that they were allowed to order it, to do their town duties. And about a month ago, Diane Boko, thank you, did a great report on the history of the selectmen and why it's such an important thing in this town, and how it's run because of her history, which is the second page of my report. So that's my two pages, and there's a lot more that I've had fun with, but since it's right in front of you, I thought it was the best thing to bring up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what is the end goal? Will you have a book? Will there be something, you said PDFs?
When you get a book, you've got to start with.
Okay.
PDF, it's just one.
So it will be on the website?
The PDF theoretically, when we get to the end of it, and it's shaken down, this is kind of all that comes to us in the PDF. We go into the town website appropriately, and it also runs a Sarah Sperry, who worked over at the library, the local history, and then it's accessible for those who might inquire in that format. And most of the stuff here, you can't picture it because of all the print parts, details. You can't read it on a PDF or a printed page, but it would entice somebody, oh, who is interested, to come into town hall and look at the actual thing. So that was the way we sought to distribute it. Also, I talked with Jim, and we're going to put it in the, we will put it in the COAs as an attachment to the thing that goes out of 900 and something people in town. And we may find amongst those people, some people who will contribute.
Yes, certainly.
And we will incorporate that. Now, as far as I'm concerned, I've been around here all my life, and I did some stuff four years ago for the 375th. But this project will be all over and done, but as long as I'm still around, something new comes up, hey, Hicks, you want to change something here? Okay, send it over, and we'll fix it. As long as I'm here anyway, and maybe somebody will pick it up now, I don't know. But that's the way I see the function of it.
Sounds wonderful.
Yep, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you both.
And everybody in the town hall has helped us, and that's, I mean, that's been very good, yeah.
Good, great.
Good group, good group for sure.
Yeah.
Very nice. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you both for your time on this.
Weekend. No, I won't leave them to this. Thanks a lot.
Well, you're certainly welcome to stay, but you can go. We have an appointment to make to the FINCOM, the Finance and Advisory Committee of Phineas Sprague. And I don't see Roger here or Jeff Calder, so I was on the Finance and Advisory Committee, Appointing Committee, which is a very long name. And we interviewed Mr. Sprague very successfully. He's very qualified, more importantly, very interested and looking forward to getting more involved in the town. So it was really nice. Great.
Okay, so any comments? So I move to appoint Phineas M. Sprague to the Finance Committee for a term beginning August 22, 2023, and ending June 30, 2026.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All right, we can vote. Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Diane, yes. unanimous vote for Mr. Sprague on the FINCOM. Thank you so much. Let's review and vote on the FY25 budget memo from the town administrator.
Well-written, by the way.
I thought so, too. Anybody have any questions? Or Steve, did you want to lead it off?
Um, basically, the only, well, I don't open any feedback, but the only point, the budget assumption that I built into it that I'd like the select board to, you know, give their gracing to is the 2% quota. It doesn't mean it can't change, but that's what all the preliminary salary numbers are going to be run off of, is that 2%. So if you're thinking, typically, that seems to be where the town does, is 2% every year. So if you want to keep it there and see what happens, or if you want to change it, that's fine.
I think we're all good with 2%. I don't think that needs to vote. Yep?
Okay, I move to approve the FY25 budget memo from the town administrator as presented. As presented.
Second.
So I just had a, so the budget templates are going to be different, but is it still going to be, so it's going, they're like Google Docs, but it's, they're spreadsheets on the OneDrive?
Yeah, so, right. So visually, they won't look that much different. We're going to include a little bit more actuals data from prior years, two full prior years. And other than that, they should look pretty close. We are requiring notes this year, which would be the justification of the contractual increases. And then the big difference is, is request for additions will be on a separate form. It's not complex. It's just department, what are you, you know, what are you looking to increase? And then what's, what's the reason?
Because it's level funded, is what we're trying to say. If you need to do increases, you need to prove the contractual increases. And then anything above and beyond will be on a separate.
Right. So contractual increases will be part of the core sheets, for lack of a better word. And then the, you know, whether it's, you know, I can't, you know, whether the, you know, I can't maintain level services because of the cost of goods has increased X, and we always spend $98, $99, $100 on $10,000 line item, and we just simply won't be able to fit it anymore, so therefore I'm asking for $1,200. You know, so that would be in a separate, so we're trying to tie dollars to services in that if the decision is made to not budget for that, we've identified.
What will be hard.
You know, what's being lost by not budgeting for those dollars. That's the attempt this year.
That's a great way to look at it. So that was, any other comments on the budget memo?
Just one brief one. I think it's great, Steve. Well done. I would just say, at the end, just close with something a little bit like uplifting, rallying. So something to say thank you for your efforts and attention to this, and I look forward to a collaborative process, like that kind of thing.
Too serious.
Right, lighten it up a little.
We had a motion that was seconded. Anybody?
Yeah, I was glad to see that we're really bringing the boards, committees, and commissions into the process early on, too. That's an improvement over prior years.
True. Great. All right. We moved and seconded. Ready to vote?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
It's the unanimous vote to approve that budget memo with a few amendments. Review and discuss the draft, personnel handbook draft is capitalized. All right. Who would like to start on this one?
I've got a few, I can.
Okay, go for it.
My suggestion, the first one would be to, in handbook, shrink or eliminate the history of the town of Wenham down to the, we're an established town, and we might include in there the, eventually, that we base upon the classification study. That might be a comment upfront, so that someone coming new to the document can understand what the basis for our whole HR system is, as far as pay.
Yeah, I would have to second that. The history of Wenham is just really old. I mean, some of it is nice, but I think it can be shortened.
Can go on the website.
Yeah.
It's on the website. I think it's taken from the website, yeah.
It needs a refresh.
Yes, refresh, and some corrections, too.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't know if it needs, does there need to be a history of town of Wenham?
No, I think paragraph one just be the basis for the document, that, you know, it's incorporated town, run by a town meeting. Because I think this document might be thought of as an introduction to someone that's a prospective candidate, and they'll just look at this and, you know, just, you know, two or three sentences is, what's the basis for Wenham Incorporated?
Okay. And then some facts, is the way we work.
Then I had under 5.3.
Is that chapter five?
Yeah, chapter five.
Personal leave?
Yeah, so I think we got to change that 90 to 180. The probationary period is going to shift to 180, right, throughout the document? So in the third paragraph under personal leave, 5-3.
Everybody gets 180-day probationary period?
Well, that's what it speaks of, further up front.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
So I just think, that's just.
It needs to be consistent.
Yeah, consistent throughout. Last paragraph of that same thing, the first sentence, "It may be possible to arrange," that sentence seems to end abruptly, "in which case what?"
You must arrange the surprise, you've got time, especially during the same work weekend, in which case something happens.
So I think there's something missing here.
Steve, that's you?
5.4, the.
Wait a second. 5.3, the fourth.
5.3.
In which case? Oh, yeah. There's no second clarification. I'm sorry.
And then, then 5.4, a jury duty. There's just, the third line, "The town will make up the jury pay." We're not making up the jury pay, we're making up the salary less the jury pay, right? If you go to jury duty, you get 100 bucks, but you earn 200 here, the town is only going to compensate the 100. So we're, the town is making up full pay less the jury pay.
Before we move on, 5.4, that second paragraph cuts against, you know, the first in that it says that after three, if I'm reading it correctly, it's saying that after three days of juror service, there is no compensation for that delta, for that lost pay.
But that's only for other employees, right? The third category? Not regular or part-timers?
Full-time or regular.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. If full-time or regular, all other employees. Who would the other employees be?
Seasonal?
Like seasonal, temporary, part-time.
Okay.
I think it's fine. I just want to make sure it should define.
Employee limit categories, yeah, 3.1. Other employees, those employed less than 20 hours a week, or those whose employment is for a specific period of less than one year.
Got it, okay.
So I guess if we ran, you know, a camp, or the lifeguards, or the summer DPW staff.
Right.
So can I just interject for a second? Because before we get super granular, can we just talk about the big picture for a second? And I realize I've been commenting on this policy manual for several years now and looked at it multiple times. So I guess I'm really into this. But I guess is our goal, to me, this is like still below the bare minimum of what the town needs. And it's nowhere near what we need to get to. So are we trying to sort of get to an interim document? I guess is what I'm trying to figure out. Because there's lots of things that need to be added, even just in the existing sections. I have a huge amount of content, which I think is going to be too much to go through in this meeting. So I'm trying to sort of see, what's our immediate goal? To get then to the longer-term goal of having a comprehensive policy document. But this is not sort of where it ends, I think is my point, in my opinion.
So here's the way I think about it. And the way we used to do stuff at Gillette is, you see, 80/20 rule. Get 80% of it right, and then we'll figure out the last 20 as we continue to progress. And figure out what that overall strategic look is, and if they need more detail in some of these parts, then we'll add it. We can add it.
I mean, I can say that, so this document started with edits circa 2017, and has had a number of people that have worked on it. So we've taken, you know, feedback I've received, some changes to like the vacation time that the board made through a public hearing about six months ago. So we've incorporated that stuff in there. It's gone to KP. They've made suggestions for changes. So anything that wasn't a substantial change in that it changed the, you know, like the policy or the benefit, I accepted the change. So I can provide the document that's marked up in like six different colors and comments and all that. So it's, but to try to, you know, so I went through it all with Joe, and we identified all the ones that we thought, you know, could be accepted and didn't actually change the intent of the section. And the stuff that I left in there were the ones that would change, like by changing it to whoever's request it was. I think you have a couple of comments in here. It would change the benefit, you know, for example, like the leave of absence, this like leave. So anyways, I mean, to the extent, so I guess it was partially an attempt to replace the document with this, but if, you know, if it's that far off the mark, then I guess I'm not, I'd be looking for direction from you on where to go. There's been a lot of feedback up till this point, at least that I'm aware of and incorporated into it. So I don't know, do we throw it out? Start fresh?
Don't, please don't.
No, no, don't throw it out. But there's just a lot of things that need to be added, even just in the existing sections. So even in like the recruitment section, just for starters. I think there's a lot of things missing. The parental leave is not quite right, lining it up with FMLA. There's a lot of, there's some statements that need to be in there to be clear and lined with the law, and how FMLA and parental leave come together. So there are some sort of policy points that I think aren't quite there yet, as well as like missing pieces. And then there's the stuff that we'll add over time, like the thing we just approved, the customer service policy, like that belongs in a chapter, right? So we're going to keep adding over time.
So I see it as our starting point, and we're going to move kind of through it. So do we want to, I'm happy if you would like to take the lead and go through, we'll just start section by section, we'll do a little bit, see how it goes. If it's getting too much for one evening, then we can stop and do more. Because I don't know, I want to see what we're really missing. I guess I don't know what we're really missing, because I only know what we have, and what I like and don't like.
So has KP?
Yeah, KP supposedly updated it, all the current laws and all those changes.
So that's a little disturbing, because you think that there's stuff is missing that should be in there, in recruitment, by law?
No, not the recruitment section by law. The parental leave and the FMLA, I think, is not closely aligned to be clear enough with how those two come together. There are statements that I think should be in there. And it's not that it's not legal. I mean, I'm not saying they didn't do appropriate legal review, but I think it's just not enough. And a lot of what they're looking, I mean, I assume they're looking at it strictly from a legal perspective and not, they're not doing a best practice review and looking at other manuals to say what's missing. They're looking strictly at what we put in front of them.
So that one example you just gave, the two things, maybe you could explain that so you can understand what's missing.
Do we want to jump to that, or why?
So I mean, I guess my, you know, we've only had this for a couple of days, and I, it would be easier for me when I do my comments to have like a Word document, and I guess this has been done, I know this has been done. I mean, I've been talking to people about this for three years.
No, well, maybe this could serve as a new comment piece. So it's incorporated all the comments, it's been updated by, you know, KP did a legal review. So I guess, in their mind, we're referencing the correct laws and the laws we're supposed to reference are being referenced, then we can start building on this again.
When you say, Steve, that this has been subject to comments and, you know, proposed changes since 2017, I don't, what do you, like, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Because that seems to me like not a very good process, that something that's taken six years.
Well, I'll take some of that, you know? So when I came in in 2020, the employee handbook was dated 2001.
Right, I can see, yeah, I see that red line.
And there was on and off again attempts to update it, but we incurred such a turnover in town administrators. That was a project that just got handed on to on, and at the same time, different staff members were assigned it as a project, and they moved on and on. So it never has. So it never has come to a complete fruition.
Yeah.
So it's, and in the meanwhile, you've had kind of the emergency changes that are incorporated just because of the immediate demand to get something down on paper and writing, as far as leave or everything else. So, but as a comprehensive project, yeah, it's been going off for years, and just kind of been passed along.
Yeah, and, and, and I've commented on this, not, this, my comments predate all of you, Steve and Joe and so forth. So, you know, this, this all predates you, obviously. So I appreciate that you're taking this on, but I just think this needs a little more before we even stop here and say, here's the working version, if that makes sense.
So we'll let you figure out what more, more looks like?
Yeah, cause Joe and I, I think, are, are going to, I mean, I already volunteered to work on the HR stuff, right? So I think if we could sit down, look at the table of contents, and I can explain, like, the FMLA parental leave, to me, that's the biggest one. To clarify it further. Like, I think at least a few things to be fixed. Then we can come back, have the version that's like the current version, and then an eye towards what we're adding over time.
That sounds good.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
So we don't wanna go through it anymore, because we're gonna wait.
Well, I mean, we could do some, but I don't think I should do all mine, it's gonna be.
I think it makes sense for, for you to, to do that, you know, whether working with Joe or doing a, a red line of a Word document to incorporate a lot of, a lot of your comments, and then to, you know, to have this become draft three point O, or whatever you wanna call it.
Twenty twenty-three draft.
Yeah.
Yep, that makes sense.
So.
So we'll be able to share around Deirdre's comments and additions before we have another meeting on it?
No, we can share them at a meeting.
We have to do it at the meeting, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah. And so I would say, and we don't have to do, beginning to the end.
Well, Deirdre's comments could be included in a draft that comes to all of us before the meeting.
In a meeting packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the meeting packet. And we, I, I don't expect you to put all this in in two weeks, right? So.
Yeah.
It, it's a project, so if you wanna do, start with the table of contents and do chapter one, and then do a couple of chapters, and bring it back whenever it's ready, you know, in sections. Cause it would be easier than going through the whole thing at a meeting anyway.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
I like it.
So we have a plan? Is that good?
It's good.
We good with that? All right.
Sorry.
No, I think it's important.
I think it's great.
It's one of the reasons I ran for select board.
Perfect, so.
Is to finally do this.
Awesome. We're gonna get it done, it's gonna get done. Do you have an idea when you wanna get it done? Like, give us a date. Give yourself a date, like.
We have the master.
No, no, no.
Definitely, not that. But the master plan meetings are this month too, so it has to be balanced with the, the technical sessions.
All right, so we're not.
I think Gary's perspective on, on answering, yeah, Wyatt, that's been kicked the can down the road. And that's so much turnover.
There's so much turnover.
I mean, he's only been here a year and four months.
June, so a year and two months.
Yeah.
So, and it's never really been in the select board's hands. Okay, so the select board, as changeable as it is, is the most continuous organ in the, in the town hall. So we had it in town administrator, we had it in the special projects, we had it in the treasure collectors, the town clerk worked on this for a while. So the turnover is always gonna happen, so I don't want anyone to assume that the turnover in Wenham has been any bit worse or than anywhere else, cause it's not, people just turn over. But your select board is your, is your stable being, and that if it's in this hands, then I think it'll definitely get done, for sure.
Okay.
Okay. So by Christmas?
Yeah, at least, at least some portion of it by Christmas, yes, definitely.
Thank you, thanks for taking that on. So we have an appointment of an interim finance director, Elizabeth Bracha, or Braca? Bracha? Steve, you gave us the information in the, in the packet, but do you wanna tell us anything about her? She's interim, just covering for Jamie, yeah?
Yeah, so the, right, so the proposed term, I believe, is forty, like forty-five days, fifty days, as interim finance director. We're hoping to have, you know, the permanent finance director in place there, or pretty close to thereabouts. If we have to, we can extend the appointment at that time. So she, we've contracted with Markham LLP, which is used to be in Lansing and Heath. Or they, I think Markham existed nationally and purchased Lansing. And so they've been around for a long time and do really good work. So Elizabeth is a supervisor with them, she's been, you know, finance director all over the state in interim capacity. And, you know, I've had a few working instances with her over the last couple of weeks, and she's been great, the company's been great. Representative we put in place also from Markham over at the police station one day a week to keep their payroll and AP going. Has been phenomenal, it was working out great. So, you know, I, I don't, I expect the same from, from her.
What, what are her hours gonna be?
From zero to sixteen hours a week. But we're still trying to identify exactly how many hours we're gonna need. I requested the first two weeks, which will start in a more permanent capacity next week, to be, you know, to go the full, a full two days, sixteen hours. So help our.
In person, not just remote?
Ah, it's a combination of. So we've set up, or Joe's work, to set up all the, um, remote in capabilities with IT, so she can get on our soft, get on our software, which is our accounting software, she can get in our network. So it'll be like working here.
It's good.
I'm sorry, you said a hundred and twenty days?
Fifty days.
I think like fifty days.
August twenty-second until October thirteenth.
October thirteenth.
Okay.
It's less than two months.
And would, we'd be looking to re-advertise the position during that period, just to try to get more applicants for the permanent position? Or is it, it's just an open advertisement now, or?
No, I think we're getting close to an appointed recommendation to the board.
All right.
That's exciting, exciting. All right, should we take a motion?
I move to appoint Elizabeth Brachia. You know, four sixty-six over there on Route One is Brachia's four sixty-six, just in case you wanted.
That's right, it is. I say Bracha.
I move to appoint Elizabeth Brachia as the interim finance director effective August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, through October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? We'll vote, Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes, it's unanimous, thank you very much, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Steve, for bringing her in. That sounds good. Discussion and vote to allow the Hamilton Wenham Children's Business Fair to be hosted on the Wenham Town Hall front lawn. This is an unbelievable fair program. It's a nationwide thing, it's not just a little thing we have in Wenham. And I'm drawing a blank. Natalie?
Natalie Bowers.
Bowers does a wonderful job organizing that, and she sent an email to, I think, all of us, probably with the date and the request to use the museum, well, that's theirs, and our front lawn on the Saturday, September twenty-third, from eleven to three. And also to request some judges from the select board, but we'll go through that separate, separate. Any questions on the, the fair? Has any, Deirdre's kids have been in it.
Absolutely.
Gary and I have both judged it. Have you ever been there, Ben?
No.
Pete, you ever see it?
It's great.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Bless you, it's really fun. You, your kids might be getting involved. I mean, to any age, really.
Are they like just watching, or?
Need a motion?
So wait a minute, it, your kids could come, they could have a booth, or they just come and you shop around. It's like a craft fair, you go from table to table, and they talk about their business, you can buy things.
Oh, I have been there.
And, yeah.
Oh, man.
Is my too young to be in that?
Are you too? Your son might be a little bit too young, but you would have a good time.
Is it too late?
The sign up, no, so, so the public is aware, the sign up is open, it's on the, the website. There's, there's a website for the Acton Children's Business Fair, and Wenham is on the list. There's a whole bunch of them around the country, like Diane said, Anna, Massachusetts. So you can go there, and there's a little form that you fill out that says your kid's business name and so forth, and a little bit about what they plan to sell. And it's great, it's a fantastic event, it's so empowering for the kids. My daughter's been building her business, so it's great, it's a great experience.
I bought a lot of stuff, too.
Yeah.
Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Good shopping.
I move to approve the use of Wenham Town Hall front lawn for the Hamilton Wenham Children's Business Fair to be held Saturday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, from eleven to three P M.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? Let's vote, Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Diane, yes, another unanimous vote to approve that use. Thank you very much, thank you to Natalie for bringing it here. We should ask, though, Natalie, to get your office, Steve, to have that link and that website, so that people can ask.
Yes.
As usual, if they have any questions, they can reach out to the TA's office. Any old business? Looks like none. Minutes.
I didn't see any issues.
So these were our second set of minutes from this company. Anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I do not.
Yes.
You did? Okay.
On page?
Three. So I just thought, so the first paragraph, it says Gary Cheeseman noticed, noted the importance of reviewing the committee charges. I think that should be period. "In addition, to standardize the townwide responsibilities of the positions of Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer." And also, the important point is that that would possibly be through a bylaw change, because I think we need to start keeping track. There were a couple places in the personnel manual where they mentioned there might need to be bylaw changes, this was another bylaw change. We need some way of, this is an aside, but some way of keeping track of these ideas for bylaw changes, so that when we get closer to town meeting, we know what we've been talking about. So that's sort of an aside, but I think that should also be in the minutes.
Did we talk about a bylaw? I think you guys did, yeah.
Yeah.
I think so, yes.
Bylaw change, but.
Gary did.
Gary Cheeseman noted the importance of reviewing the committee charges, period.
In addition.
In addition.
He suggested standardizing the townwide responsibilities, and possibly through a bylaw change.
Did you get that? Okay.
And then the next paragraph, "The chair suggested six major categories, but town hall grand plan was not one of our categories."
And quote, "Communication."
I think that should be "communication plan," and I thought initially we had five categories. Communication plan, it's not really extended green initiatives, but green initiatives, board and committee.
Yeah.
Research, I guess, is okay, H R and I T, right? But it's not a town hall grand plan.
Three, four. I thought that, I thought we were gonna come with five, but for some reason, I remember, I thought we ended up with six, but so it's a town.
I think one was a miscellaneous, though.
Okay, communication.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll confirm whatever the spreadsheet says.
Yeah, right. And the next paragraph, it's just not quite what I recall. "Select board discussed, I think, whether to include a revised budget process in the goals list." I'm not sure it was in the discussions. And then the select board, the next sentence is really a different issue, so I think that should be a new paragraph. "Select board agreed to review, prioritize, and categorize the list of ideas." Those are two separate things. The point about the budget process is one. And then what we discussed in terms of categorizing, prioritizing is something else. And then again, under C, it's not, I guess, same thing, just make it consistent with the list, it's not a town hall grand plan.
I wonder what it, that's funny.
And then the Sean Davis thing, we did say it was a threshold that's rare and warrants recognition, but I thought we were, at least what I was asking was to try to state that as a threshold, that the forty years warrants recognition, not just in this circumstance, but going forward. Does that sound?
It was agreed that Sean Davis's forty years of service in the town warrants recognition.
I'm not sure that included, was included in the motion, though.
True. True, it was not in the motion.
And it's, and they sort of include that in the first paragraph, the last sentence. It was agreed that Sean Davis was, is a threshold that is rare and warrants recognition, so.
Yeah, well, I'm okay with.
That was all.
And here's F, which is why I brought my iPad.
I had a couple of, a couple of things I noticed. I think that one of the critiques that we had of the last version was that on motions, it just said motion carried, it didn't give the vote.
Yeah, that re, that feedback cycle is, it's in the loop.
It's not cut up.
Not cut up, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
June twenty-fifth.
Gotcha, okay, so that's, so we'll be looking for that in the, in the previous ones. I also thought that on page four, seven, old business. This isn't really a criticism, more just of an, an observation, and those of you with more experience on boards lately can tell me whether it should be more expansive in the minutes. But certainly, the discussion that we had about whether the finance committee should or shouldn't have a role was, it went on for a little while. I mean, there were, I think there were four or five of us that kind of gave comments. And it just says, "The select board discussed leveraging the financial management expertise of the finance committee before approving the investment policies as presented." That's probably a pretty good headline for the discussion, and I just make the observation that it's a, it's a very, you know, just summary sentence on something that was a little bit more elaborate than the discussion. And I don't know whether prior minutes would, would elaborate more on who said what, or some of the back and forth. Maybe it's not necessary, but it does seem like a very, a very spare distillation.
Summary, it's a very brief summary. I don't mind that.
I agree with Ben's comment, because I think, I think these are sufficient, but they're not, there's some level of nuance missing, I think, from the minutes that we're getting, which I think is what you're saying. So.
And I realize that this isn't A I, it's, it's somebody, it's a person.
Right, it's a person.
But it has that, that, one of the, you know, critiques of A I is that it, you know, can give you a good, basic, unnuanced draft. But if, if you want some nuance, you probably need a human, here we have a human involved, but I, I think you put it well, Deirdre, that it is lacking in some nuance and context, and maybe just pure detail.
Right, it's not meant to be a transcript, but it's not quite there in terms of capturing the essence of what's going on. And you, you know, what we want is, for three years from now, if somebody looked back, they get a sense of what we were doing, and what we were saying, and what we were thinking.
Right.
And this is sort of, you know, it's okay, it's not that it's bad, it's just.
So I, I'm listening, and I'm, and I'm thinking, and I go back to when I do minutes for the town meeting, and want everything involved, so that when someone reads it later on, they can get all the feeling, and who's there, and who said what, and who agreed with this and that. And then I think, when I go back to do research, and I do a lot of research in select board minutes, in town meeting minutes, this is easy to find what I need. Like, I don't need, if I, you know, ten years from now, when they look back on that, are they gonna wonder, did the whole select board? I mean, did they have, which of the select board wanted this, which one didn't? No, I'm looking back to see when they did it. You know, so I'm kind of going, you know, I, I don't know, I, I see both sides, I don't know what's better. Maybe we can ask for a little more detail, and then look at that and see if we like that, or if it's too much, and then, and keep playing with it.
Yeah, and I think we're not looking for a transcript, it's not like.
No, we don't wanna transcript.
Someone said this, and someone said that, and someone, like, not that.
Yeah, but it requires the exercise of judgment by the recording secretary to find that balance. I think what you're talking about, Diane, may, maybe, you know, the bolded section of some of these, which specifically says. which specifically says, here's the motion, and then eventually hopefully it'll say what the vote was. But that gives you the bottom line and the headline.
Mm-hmm.
But I think there's a little bit of judgment required by the recording secretary to decide, okay, this is an important enough thing. It went on for long enough. Let's provide some detail. Um, so I'm not sure how we.
So how does it work? So they got the feedback from our last minutes, but they were already working on these.
Yeah.
So then the next minute.
So we'll see, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be slowly improved, hopefully.
Give them some more feedback and see if they can.
Yeah, remember they're also taking minutes on.
What we're saying.
Conversation right now.
Will they capture all the nuance of it?
Um, so we didn't have a vote or anything on these minutes. How did we do it last time when we had amendments?
We didn't.
We didn't, we didn't vote. We were waiting for the.
For the revised.
Revised copy. And we feel comfortable, we, we feel like, just do that again.
You know, what Catherine Tinsley used to do, boards that had a lot of revisions and it may make sense to implement here in this case is had a shared, she used to use Google Doc, but we could probably use O three sixty-five. And then everyone go in and make your, you know, make the corrections. Um, and then we'd have a.
Catherine rarely made a mistake.
So.
Well, the planning board always had a lot of revisions from what Catherine said.
Very technical.
Yeah, just sort of like this could be, I'm saying, but maybe it could, instead of, you know, cause it's always easier, like a red line markup, to just go in and type what you're thinking. Put the, put the space in, put the period in, you know what I mean? So it, it captures what you, instead of someone listening back to the tape. You know, like, all right, let's make these and take a look. Be like, well, I kinda meant this.
But can we do that in one document? We'd have to, because we can't all be in a collaborative document, right?
Yeah, you can. Just like Google Doc, yeah. Yeah, it's like the same thing.
I think it's referring to open meeting.
For, I'm talking.
Oh, oh, you mean open meeting?
Not, not technically, yes. Technically we can, but O M L E, we can't.
So, wait a minute. The process used to be, the minutes would be taken and the minutes would be sent to the secretary, in this case right now, Gary, and Gary would make revisions, bring it back to the, um, minutes and bring it to the, have these minutes, are they doing the same thing? Like, are they going to Gary first?
Yeah, to go through Michelle, to myself, back to Michelle.
So you made some edits?
Yes.
And then it goes back to you to bring up to us?
So where did the?
Yeah, so why would we have a shared drive? I mean, I don't understand why we would do that.
That's if everybody wants to, instead of taking the time in the meeting like right now to have some process where all five review the minutes, put in their.
I wouldn't recommend that.
Or just send it back to us. We'll send out the minutes.
I don't think we're gonna have that many changes to require of like, putting it on a shared drive.
I think I would rather talk it through, being a new system, whatever, and a new, new, bigger board, et cetera, et cetera. I'd rather just do what we're doing.
See if we can get it improved.
See, we slowly improve it that way. And then ideally, it would go back to the same thing. They would take the minutes, send the minutes to Michelle, Michelle to the secretary. The secretary would da, 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 send it back. We'd all look at it and go, oh, you missed something or you didn't miss something, and it would be easy. Let's try to get there again. Is that all right with you guys?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So no votes, except that.
You ready?
Yeah. I think it's actually, it's actually Gary's motion, but.
Oh, sorry. No, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I know that you really liked your adjournment.
Yeah, I mean, you're in the habit from last year, so carry on. Okay, well, so with nothing further to discuss, I move that we adjourn the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three select board meeting at seven fifty-five.
Second.
Any comments, questions, vote? Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Diane says yes, it's a unanimous adjournment. And if we were all in person, we wouldn't have to do roll call votes.
And do we, you want these? Michelle, should we give these back to you?